Clean Water Services and all other county services districts is meeting this regular session November 18th, 2025. Commissioner Fai?
President.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Vice Chair Treese?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
I'll announce Commissioner Willie as excused for tonight.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Will everyone please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and address the board for up to two minutes an individual, 10 minutes total for the group on any topic you would like to speak to us about. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so tonight?
We do, Madam Chair. We have Dale Feek. Dale?
You already passed those out, Kevin? Thank you. I'm sorry. Chair Harrington, I broke protocol. Chair Harrington, Commissioners, administrators, and people in the audience, I'm Dale Feek. I've been doing business here since 2013 before I was ever around. So I've got a history of how things work in the county and Clean Water Services, and I try to use that to make government more effective. And I really appreciate what you do as county commissioners, especially you, Chair Harrington, and how you've led in the last since you've been elected. So thank you for your leadership. I sent you an email about what you've got now. What you have now is a little bit of a summary of that. It's not a summary of mine. It's a kind of a summary. It's a summary of what Timothy Snyder wrote on tyranny, 20th lessons from the 20 lessons or actions from the 20th century, and on freedom. Timothy Snyder, and as you know, I went to his lecture at the Schnitz, my wife and I did on the 28th, the reason I wasn't here at a county commission meeting, and we listened to him speak. And then I found out that the literary arts, I was going to make a podcast of that. So what I did is I went right to literary arts right away, met somebody, and they said they'll send me the podcast right away. So once I received the podcast, I listened to it, recorded on my phone, and then sent and got a transcription of that. Ninety percent accuracy because it's artificial, it's just voice recognition. They didn't get a lot of it. So I listened to it three times because I want to learn what anything Timothy Snyder says, I want to listen and learn and take action. And that's the reason I'm Chair of the West County Citizen Action Network. And so, please, please, do get on the link, listen to him, and then read the attachment to what I gave you so you can read it and follow along if you want to. Anybody in the audience wants to do that, let me know, and I'll make sure you get that information. Timothy Snyder is really trying to make it so that we don't become an authoritarian state. If we don't act quickly and decisively, it will happen. Chair Harrington, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. Clerk Moss, anyone else?
Is there anyone else in the auditorium that didn't get opportunity to sign up and testify? If you stand up, raise your hand, start coming forward, not seeing any in the room. We, it looks like we have one hand online, a Kelly Ogul. Kelly, can you hear us?
Can.
Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Great. My name is Kelly. I'm a resident of Oak Hills, a community of over 600 homes located across from the planned Cornell Road Transitional Housing Project. I just want to share, I'm a Democrat, I'm a liberal, and I'm not here to say not in my backyard. However, I am here to say I have deep concern over the planned transitional housing coming. First off, deeply bothered by the lack of transparency regarding the purchase of the hotel. There's been acknowledgement from the commissioners that the communication was not optimal from an outsider looking in. I'd say not optimal, could be perceived as dishonest and secretive. You've left us feeling blindsided and not trusting in the process. In addition, I'd like to bring your attention to the issue of the vacant farm that's located just feet from the facility. The farm remains unused, several acres, 11 months out of the year. It is overgrown, riddled with garbage, and has become a dumping ground for people along Cornell, as well as the empty structures have become a home for several transients and drug activity. The county's lack of attention addressing this mess and neglected property has only exacerbated exacerbated the situation and further compromises the safety of our neighborhood. Again, very disappointing. More importantly, however, is the Cornell Transitional Housing Project and the intentional absence of background checks that will allow sexual predators and violent criminals to move in just feet from our kids near six different schools that serve over 3,000 children. We need to do better. We can't hide behind emergency housing laws. We expect more from our county and our housing services, and we hope you will do right and make some needed changes in the policies planned for this.
Thank you, Ms. Ogul.
Next, Madam Chair, we have Deanna Johnson. Deanna, can you hear us? Do you hear us, Deanna?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Fantastic. I had to change the microphone type. Yes, so I wanted to comment. I was looking for an update around the CVS, I'm sorry, CWS, providing low-income assistance to vulnerable customers in Washington County. I did have a chance to attend that meeting last month where you all went to the CWS, and one of the tasks that you had given them back in May or June was to find out what other programs other sewer companies are offering. And while I sat through that meeting, the best they came up with was Twelton Valley, Water Valley's discount program that they implemented last year, where I've testified in this forum that they raised their rates last year 20%. And in that same month, they gave us a 20% discount. I'm still paying the same exact amount I was paying October 31st versus, you know, November 1st of 2024. And now they've just raised our rates again as of November 1st of this year, another 4%, and they've approved another rate increase for them to increase rates again next year. I'm really hoping that, you know, either we can look for some funds in that contingency fund that CWS has, they were able to find some extra money to put into their purse, they were able to, you know, give themselves 30%, you know, raises, but they're not doing anything to support the vulnerable houses, you know, people with low income here in Washington County, you know, who are struggling, and their water and sewer is going to be turned off. So I just wanted to make a plea once again on that, to kind of hold them to task, to find out a solution. They have City of Portland, where we actually get our water from, Twelton Valley, you know, they're leasing it from them. So, and they have a wonderful program where they're offering 60% AMI, they'll give them 30%. Or if they're at 30% AMI, they'll give them a 60% discount. It's like we're not reinventing a wheel, but they're kind of skirting around what's available for, you know, low-income households. Thank you so much, and I heed my time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Madam Chair, that concludes the hands for tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of 17 different items. Two sets of minutes, four items from Clean Water Services, one item from Emergency Management, one item from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, one item from the Health and Human Services Department, one item from the County Administrative Office, one item from Housing Services, one item from Finance, three items from Land Use and Transportation, one item from the Board of Commissioners, and one item from the District Attorney Department. What are the wishes of the board?
Hope to accept the consent agenda.
We have a motion and a second to adopt tonight's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we will move on to board and commission assignments. We have proposals for three different committees tonight. The first is a proposal to appoint Ryan Tolackensen and reappoint Karen Bolin to the Washington County and Service District for Lighting Number One Combined Budget Committee with terms of service ending June 30th of 2028. What are the wishes of the commission regarding this appointment?
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Next, we have a proposal to appoint Spencer Hatch to the Enhanced Sheriff Patrol Urban Road Maintenance District Joint Budget Committee with terms of service ending June 30th, 2028. What are the wishes of the commission regarding this appointment?
Move to adopt the appointment.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And lastly, for a third budget committee tonight, we have a proposal to reappoint Bruce Young to the North Bethany County Service District for Roads Budget Committee with a term of service ending June 30th, 2028. What are the wishes of the commission?
Moved to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And thank you to all of those members of our community for stepping forward and volunteering to be active participants in each of these budget committees. We appreciate your time, your comments, and your commitment to contribute here in Washington County. Next, we're moving on to presentations, and we have two different presentations tonight. And for the first one, I would like to call up to the table our elected Sheriff Caprice Welcome, Sheriff Massey. And you have the clicker as well, so you've got the power.
Wow. Well, I'm going to have to find a way to take advantage of this. Thank you so much, Chair Harrington, and Commissioners for having me this evening. The reason we're here is to do a, really a comprehensive brief on license plate reader technology and upcoming technologies that we are utilizing here at the Washington County Sheriff's Office. Specifically, what we're going to talk about tonight is the Flock cameras. We really want to make sure that what we communicate here leaves you feeling confident that we are using Flock cameras responsibly and effectively to enhance public safety and combat organized retail crime. Recent discussions statewide have raised questions about automated license plate reader technology. We want to be transparent about how the Sheriff's Office uses these tools, the safeguards that we have in place, and how they support our mission to keep our community safe. Organized retail crime continues to have a major impact on local businesses, both large and small, resulting in substantial financial losses, increased security costs, and heightened safety concerns for both employees and customers. In response to that, the Washington County District Attorney's Office obtained a grant from the Oregon Department of Justice to combat organized retail crime. The purchase of mobile Flock camera trailers for targeted enforcement and investigative purposes is just a small part of that effort. These cameras are not surveillance tools for broad monitoring. They are strategically deployed to investigate and deter property and theft-related crimes. In August 2024, I just want to talk a little bit more about this grant. The District Attorney's Office was awarded a $1.5 million grant on behalf of the Washington County Interagency Organized Retail Theft Task Force. This grant was a collaborative effort between the DA's office and all of the Washington County law enforcement agencies. Among other things, the grant was used to purchase seven Flock camera systems for local public safety agencies at a total cost of approximately $396,000. Additional funding was dedicated to engage in joint organized retail crime missions and allow funding distribution to small and medium-sized retailers to help upgrade security and surveillance systems. Understanding the profound impact organized retail theft and crime has had on the livability of Washington County was the motivation for requesting this grant funding.
Sorry to interrupt you, Sheriff, with your flow, but could you repeat the numbers? The number of cameras you said deployed and the cost?
Seven. Seven cameras, cost at roughly $396,000, and a $1.5 million state grant total. First, I'd kind of like to be clear about what we're talking about exactly. LPR stands for license plate reader. ALPR stands for automated license plate reader. It matters because what we are using them for is license plate readers. They are activated for a mission and then turned off. Automated license plate readers are technology that are constantly scanning and storing information. We actually had a couple of these several years ago on our cars, our fleet, and deputies would be driving around, and they're constantly scanning license plates. So it's not new technology.
The APRs or the?
The ALPRs, the automated license plate readers.
Got it.
And what we're currently using are the license plate readers, which we turn on and then we turn off. Flock license plate reader cameras capture rear license plate data and vehicle characteristics on public roadways and businesses. The data can be searched only for legitimate law enforcement purposes, similar to accessing DMV or other public record databases. Every agency administrator has control over the sharing preferences for their organization, and they can be reviewed and revoked by the user at any time. This includes a no-sharing option with anyone. For some context, in Washington County, we do not share with any agencies outside the state of Oregon. And that is specific because we have really great laws around sanctuary status. And so we have made the decision not to share with any law enforcement agencies outside the state of Oregon, and we do not share with federal partners. I'm positive you're going to hear me say that again. Let me talk about, sorry, I got lost. There we go. Let's talk about the benefits a little bit. Improved investigative leads. These systems help identify vehicles connected to organized crime, theft rings, aiding in quick arrests and case resolutions. They enhance officer efficiency. Everyone knows that we're short staff, and we don't have an abundance of deputies out on the road. It allows deputies to spend less time canvassing and more time addressing active threats and community confidence because it does demonstrate proactive, technology-driven efforts to protect local retailers and deter theft. License plate readers are not new technology to the Washington County Sheriff's Office or around the country. It matters how it is used, responsibly and following state and local laws. As crime fighters, it is our responsibility to leverage technology to do our jobs. We don't have enough staff to be everywhere at all times to keep our communities safe for everyone who lives, works, and visits this incredible community. We have a storied history of utilizing technology responsibly and in a way that honors our community's privacy and their rights. I want to acknowledge that we are in a season in our community where nervousness and fear are legitimate and valid. In late August, Flock paused a federal pilot program with Homeland Security nationwide out of caution to help customers comply with state and local immigration laws. On Wednesday, November 26th, the DA, Kevin Barton, and I are meeting with the ACLU to listen to concerns regarding their experience with this system. Proactively, we are participating in a statewide work group titled Law Enforcement Responsible Technology that is reviewing best practices for law enforcement-related technologies. The goal is to proactively evaluate potential legislation and develop policy recommendations for law enforcement agencies across the state. It will address a range of technologies to include ALPR, drones, and AI. The Sheriff's Office's use of Flock cameras is a focused, accountable, and transparent effort to address organized retail crime and protect our community. When used ethically and transparently, technology strengthens public safety and trust. We remain committed to balancing public safety with privacy and to ensuring our use of technology always aligns with our values of integrity, service, and trust, and my core values of doing your best, do the right thing, and treat others the way you want to be treated. Please allow me to reiterate, at no time do we share data with ICE or Border Patrol. All data and public records requests are reviewed and completed by subject matter experts within County Council, with County Council involvement and well-trained staff to ensure that we are in compliance at all times. With that, I look forward to responding to any questions or concerns you might have.
If I might set some context here. Sheriff Massey, I appreciate your coming to an evening board meeting so that the board would have the opportunity of the information and that we took the steps to ensure that our community had a really good stepping off point. I would like to give the opportunity to my colleagues to see what further informational requests you might have, but knowing that we... Thank you, Commissioner Snyder, for taking the time out of your participating at the AOC conference to join us this evening. But I'm mindful of the fact that we do have a long agenda tonight, so I would like to ensure that we have the opportunity to share with the sheriff what, if any, further information needs we might have, and to invite the sheriff back to a future board forum in December or January, time to be sorted out because we already have very full agendas for the month of December. But, so I just wanted to provide that as a starting point. And at this juncture, if I might, Sheriff, turn over to my colleagues and ask you, do you have any further information requests or comments to share with the sheriff at this point? Go ahead, Commissioner Snyder. Thank you for kicking us off.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. Very quickly, Sheriff Massey, thank you for the presentation. And I think what would be helpful, honestly, for future discussion, you know, I heard you make the distinction between the automated license plate reader and the license plate reader, and there's clearly a distinction. What I think is a little bit maybe lost in that right now is really for a member of the public to be able to understand the true distinction. And frankly, I think what would be most helpful would be a couple of very quick stories or vignettes that help explain the difference to the community in a future discussion. And I think it'd be helpful to the board as well to sort of walk through just, you know, in one to two minutes at most, just the basics of what, an actual scenario that occurred and the distinction between what and how what we currently have deployed or had deployed is, and then contrast that to what it's not. I think that would be immensely helpful, and that's my only comment and request.
Excellent. I'll make sure that I have that prepared.
But I also want to make sure it's clear here. With, the Sheriff's Office has had experience with the automated license plate readers in the past. And what we have in place right now with the task force, the Organized Retail Theft Task Force across Washington County and with our own Sheriff's Department is the license plate readers, not the automated ones, in these little truck setups as pictured in the presentation at various locations, seven systems with the Sheriff's Office throughout Washington County. So I just want to make sure that's abundantly clear for everyone who has had the opportunity of this presentation tonight. Other Commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Treese.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Sheriff, for being with, here with us tonight. I appreciate your backdrop explanation. There is just an extreme level of concern in our community about surveillance and how surveillance is being handled. I think that there's also, the term Flock, the name Flock, is something that has come to mean a tool that ICE employs for surveillance. So I think that's another piece, too, to Commissioner Snyder's point. I think it's very important that we understand how ICE might use that in definition against how we might use that. But all the while, we have to make sure that we are communicating with our community what the purpose of this process is. Thank you for sharing the task force and the work that's going on in the retail theft arena. But I also think it's important that we distinguish between ourselves and that work. I have two questions. One is, you mentioned that agencies within the state are, you do share with agencies. Can you identify who those agencies are?
I can. I don't have them all, the list of them now, but there's roughly 25 or so police agencies. So Tiger PD I know is one, Twelton Police Department is one, and we have access to each other's information. Flock, to your point, Commissioner, is a brand name, right? Like Axon or some of these other technological companies. And they have the ability to share broadly across the country or locally. There are also homeowners associations, for instance, that can share data in to the Flock system if they experience a property crime in their homeowners association, but they can't access the data that's in the system. And so I do think it's a great opportunity to just dig into what is possible and how we use it and the restrictions that we put in place.
I, thank you. And I understand the branding name, but the reality is that it is becoming consistent with other perceptions. The other question I have is that you mentioned the automatic license plate reader was previously on vehicles, so it's not currently utilized?
No, we haven't been utilizing that contract for several years.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Fai?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening.
Thank you. And I'm really glad that you're going to come back and do another appearance here.
I'm happy to.
Because I think you did the bare, I feel like the bare minimum. It's the start of this conversation, so I'm happy to hear that. And then when you do come back, I think the informational needs that I have particularly are visibility to the grant and visibility to the contract that you saw, that Washington County and the DA signed with Flock. And then I would also like you to come back and tell us that the recommendation Senator Ron Wyden is making in terms of encouraging communities in Oregon removal of Flock. What does that mean to you in terms of the operations that you have deployment and the impact to your operation? Because I'll be honest with you, just cards, all cards on the table, I am actually interested in that recommendation, to see what that looks like of what the... And then the other, you don't have to answer now, but when you do come back, the other question that I would like you to answer is the definition of sharing. Does that mean you're sharing passwords?
No.
Or, and do you actually share passwords with other local?
Absolutely not.
Okay. Great to hear that. And because there's a lot of misconceptions and a lot of, you know, Flock saying, I'm not here to police the police. And then there's a lot of ICE activities in communities, and we know the magnitude of this technology. We understand what it can and cannot do. And then there's a lot of data sharing happening. So for us, I like to understand if Washington County and the DA's office have ever shared their password, their Flock password with anybody. And then what are the, you know, there's a lot of talk about the search engines and how there is an ability, the inability to specify what exactly you're searching for law enforcement. I think the Senator and other news talked about how you just put in crime or investigating, investigation. But I'd like to understand how do, what are the search engines happening in Washington County, in particularly with Flock data? So if you can come back any of those information... So if you can come back any of those information and I really hope that you read through what the Senator is saying and some of the, you know, claims that is being made in that letter and to come back to answer for us because I'm particularly alarmed, the utilization of this data and the impact it has on our community. But I don't want to jump to conclusion.
Thank you.
But I want to understand first and then make that decision because it's alarming and we have to do whatever we can to mitigate the anxiety that exists in our community and then figure out what is in our role of the increased federal immigration, the rates that are happening in Washington County and what role does FLOC play? So those are the questions I like to understand, but you don't have to answer it tonight. We've got an agenda packed, agenda, but when you do come back, I would like you to come back with those information Sheriff.
Yeah, and there are some things that I won't be able to speak to for, on behalf of the DA.
Right.
Regarding the grant and things like that, so I'm happy though to communicate with him and let him know that.
Well, since this grant is, I'll put it out there, since this grant is the DA and the Sheriff, I was expecting both of you will be here tonight too, but I think I want to extend that as one individual on this board to also say, come have the DA appear here and also speak to the activities relating to his office because he's also individually elected and who can speak to activities in his department. So I want to extend that invitation. I don't know how the board feels, but I'd like to hear directly from the DA as well.
So I will work with the sheriff in setting up a future date, but I also want to be clear, the board gives direction, not just one, and I think it's not fair of us to be asking the sheriff to be presenting on the FLOC products, product line overall. We're asking the sheriff to speak to the use of the FLOC products, specific FLOC products used by the sheriff's office and not broad-based FLOC use of product by anybody else or anybody else's search engines. That is outside of your department management task, so... And you were very clear in, and I want to thank you, you were very clear in your presentation about the sharing of the license plate reader data only with the other Oregon jurisdictions and that is it. So and as you mentioned, we'll also look forward to, depending upon the timing, what insight you may have for that statewide work group as well.
Absolutely. I'm really looking forward to it and our Chief Deputy Al Roquet is participating in that work group.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to our second presentation of this evening, Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services Joint Quarterly Update. I'd like to welcome up the various members of our housing department. We usually have, there's another chair over here. Welcome and I'll turn it over to you Molly.
Great. Good evening Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers and I'm the Director of Housing Services. We're here today for our regularly scheduled voter-approved housing resources updates, the Affordable Housing Bond and the Supportive Housing Services Measure. Thanks to the voters and to Metro for changing thousands of lives, achieve housing stability and hope in the Portland region and especially here in Washington County. I'm joined tonight by our two Assistant Directors Jill Chen and Jess Larson, as well as a special guest, Kiomi Arbuckle, who serves as the Community Services Coordinator and the S.H.S. City Liaison for the City of Hillsborough. And just last Friday, we got to celebrate with Kiomi and the rest of the Hillsborough leadership in opening the first year-round adult shelter in the city.
Big accomplishment, yes.
As you may remember. Thank you. It was actually, on a very personal note, to share with you that it was about 25 years ago when I was a graduate school fellow and I had the honor of doing research with the Community Action Organization for Washington County and I listened to dozens and dozens of people experiencing homelessness right here in this county then. And what they overwhelmingly expressed was a desire to come inside, to have a place of respite and to have a chance for a better future for themselves and their children. And they needed and they expressed desire for more shelter options even back then. And so thanks to the partnership we have with the City of Hillsborough, with Project Homeless Connect and with Washington County, this dream of coming inside has finally been Kiomi will be sharing more later about the meaningful partnerships and programs we've all developed together. Next slide please. So I also would like to express my gratitude to you all for joining us at our annual housing forum on October 30th. This is my third housing forum and it's really become my favorite tradition here. We are really honored by an esteemed panel of national, state and local leaders facing real-time federal disinvestments and heightened immigration enforcement, along with Representative Pam Marsh, the Chair of the House Committee on Housing and Homelessness, who was our keynote speaker. We had the honor of presenting our first-ever Housing Services Community Cares Award to Ellie Smith, who is a housing placement specialist with Open Door Housing Works. And it felt particularly warming to have this award be presented by our very own OG housing champion, Chair Harrington. Next slide. And at the housing forum, we released our inaugural department-wide annual report of our accomplishments for fiscal year 2425. And if you need a copy, we have some very much, we've got lots here, happy to share. And just really, really proud of all the work of this community has done. In this past fiscal year, our incredible team and partners served 20,700 persons in Washington County, which is the size of Sherwood. Through affordable housing, shelters, eviction prevention, short and long-term rental assistance, we've worked to sustain, support and preserve housing stability across the county. So this report is really a testament to the heart, the determination and the creativity of the housing services team and it reflects our growing impact in creating pathways out of homelessness, promoting housing stability and investing in affordable communities for Washington County and our residents. And as you'll see in these next few slides, the data really tells a powerful story of this work, especially in affordable housing, supportive services and our collaboration with the City of Hillsborough on a new shelter. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Assistant Director Chen.
Thank you. Thank you. And for the record, I'm Jill Chen, Assistant Director of Department Housing Services in the housing side. And we'll go through just a few slides very quickly about the Regional Affordable Housing Bond and this is our quarterly update. A quick summary about our housing production. With the Metro Affordable Housing Bonds, Washington County received over 118 million, which was deployed in 12 projects across the region in, with seven partners and out of all of those 12 projects, 10 are already in operations and serving over 800 new households. Two are still in, you can call it in process. One is in construction with Woodland Hearth and the other one is in pre-development, Aloha A short map of where our assets are, in the green, you will see those are the projects that have already opened, that is the over 800 units. The yellow is that which is in construction and the red is that which is in pre-development. And we have a total of 958 units. Short summary of where the Metro Affordable Housing Bonds in relations to our original target. Metro, in our agreement with Metro, we have specific targets related to total units produced. Family-sized units as defined by two or more bedrooms, that was for over 50% of the total production. Very low-income units, serving those households that earn less than 30% area median income. So for a household of four, that's only about $37,000 a year. And the last is our permanent supportive housing production, targeting our homeless population with entry, with coordinated entry referrals. These total production targets you'll see have all been exceeded significantly by the team and the additional funds coming to Washington County from interest earned are not being included. That would be a project such as our Forest Grove Permanent Supportive Housing Project. So what is coming up next in the next few, you can call it? We're almost done, so what else is coming up? The first is Aloha 209. That is a project that is with the Metro Site Acquisition Fund. It is in pre-development. We have selected the general contractor architect and about 50% design development. We're seeking, we will be coming to the board for concept endorsement in early, in January and then moving forward with applying for additional funds with the Oregon Housing Community Services. We'll also be coming to the board for approval for a grant from the neighborhoods in, Nature and Neighborhoods Grant for 750, that's coming in next month. Also coming to the board for the use and the, of the approximately five and a half million in interest earnings. This was an IGA that was signed in November and we're looking forward to essentially producing more units. With that, I turn it over to my colleague Jess Larson.
Thank you Jill. Good evening Chair, Commissioners, pleasure to be with you. Jess Larson, for the record, Assistant Director of the Department of Housing Services and pleased to bring you our homeless services updates, specifically those funded through the Supportive Housing Services Measure. But first, a brief stop on our point-in-time count. This is a body of work that is done collaboratively across the region, generally every other year as required in our reporting to our HUD funder through the Continuum of Care Program and was recently released. This is not new data for you all, but what occurred in recent weeks was the compilation of the data from the three counties to put out a regional report and you may have seen this mentioned in local news and so we wanted to bring this here for your awareness. Some highlights to call out are as that homelessness continues to trend upwards, much of this in our point-in-time count is captured, well, it's frankly captured in many different data points, but it's important to call out changes in how the data is presented and specifically the addition of admin data by our colleagues in Multnomah County. That is the by-name list that they are producing to improve how they track people moving in and out of their system and sort of was used to augment their point-in-time count. In Washington County, we also use a by-name list data to manage the inflow and outflow of our system and coordinate care, but we made a decision not to add this data to our point-in-time count because we wanted to be able to track the trends from year to year of how homelessness is changing in Washington County. So what we do want to call out though is that, and you've heard us share this, that in general, the where homelessness increased in Washington County was in our shelter beds and not generally in the unsheltered count. There was 10 roughly additional individuals counted, unsheltered, but the most impact of increase was counted through our increased capacity to serve people experiencing homelessness. So we are proud of that data point, if you will. The other item that we like to kind of highlight in our point-in-time count is that in Washington County, generally we see a greater number of people experiencing homelessness in our shelters than not in our shelters. And this is actually the inverse of the trend statewide, whereas homelessness continues to trend upward across counties through, across Oregon, generally we're seeing higher and higher rates of unsheltered homelessness and we know that this is because of the investments we've been able to make in our shelter system as we were just discussing, the grand opening of our Hillsborough Shelter. So we are on the right track by many accounts and it's important to see that homelessness persists in our community and it takes all of us working together and all of our systems working together to be available to the emergency responsiveness of homelessness. We did not prepare a slide for this, but while I'm on the topic of our managing our HUD work, it's also important to note that the Continuum of Care NOFO was announced this last week by our partners at HUD. It is a significant shift from previous years in that funding opportunity. Staff are still evaluating how we will be responsive. COC funds approximately $5 million in our homeless services system, which is approximately $120 million annually here in Washington County. So it is kind of the foundation of our original homeless services system and we want to maintain those resources as best as we are able. So we are looking to strategies to respond to this funding opportunity, sustain the supports in our community, pivot where we need to, to keep programs underway with other resources as necessary, but we're still evaluating before we can put forth our actual plan, which we will be sure to update this board on. Currently, the NOFO is due in mid-January. Be happy to take any questions on that, but I'll proceed with the rest of the presentation and we can come back to those. So our job here tonight is to shine a light on our quarterly accomplishments, so here's a quick slide doing just that. Our quarter one, which began in July 1st and ended at the end of September, included the opening of our first access center. I think it's, it seems like old news at this time, but it's still a great accomplishment to have just compassion, operating both a year-round shelter and now an access center open to, broadly to anyone experiencing unsheltered homelessness who can come inside and receive those day-to-day basic need services and get connected to longer-term care and shelter. So we're thrilled to have that first access center and as you know, we're working towards a system of four across the county. We also are underway in revamping our local implementation plan. We're in year five, it's time to plan for years six through 10. We're working to have broad engagement opportunities with our community and looking forward to bringing you that draft plan in the coming months. As I mentioned, we are working on navigating a continued-changing landscape with our federal funding and how to strategically leverage our state and regional resources to make sure we are funding a stable and complete system of care. And then last, a highlight is really this map on the left here, which represents some of that continuous system refinement and improvement underway in Washington County with our partners, an updated outreach map. So we make sure that every square inch of our county inside the service district, well actually even outside of the metro service district, has a designated outreach provider to respond to that community if someone is experiencing unsheltered homelessness. if someone is experiencing unsheltered homelessness. And we updated that map in partnership with our city partners and our outreach providers to make sure that we are being as responsive and strategic as possible with that, that system of providers. Next, just a quick stop off on our quarterly metric goals. These are the outcomes that we are obligated to report on to Metro. We set our goals each year based on funding commitments and the, the sort of pace of our system to move people in and through housing stability. And so you can see on the far left, our goals for this year and in the middle column, where we are at at the end of Q1 and where we are at in progress percentage-wise. Some quick notes for you is we're generally on track. We have our shelter system capacity sustained from the get-go and plan to sustain that through the year. As you know, the expansion or the opening of the new shelter in Hillsborough is really a sustaining of permanent capacity as we ramp down some temporary locations. So not an increase of overall capacity. The one item I do want to call out is our homeless prevention goal is set rather low this year because we knew it wasn't going to launch until mid-year. We are really keen to get this new homeless resolution or housing resolution fund underway. It will be timely to address homeless preventions needed in our community and move in assistance for anyone who is not otherwise being already served by one of our service providers. Oh, and this is an opportunity to mention, you had a previous conversation today about introducing new key performance metrics. And this kind of tells you a little bit of why these goals were, we're going to really level out in how many households we can serve each year. And as all of the capacity is already filled up with households already housed, we're moving into our sustaining and maintaining our system. So there are other metrics that will help us measure the effectiveness of our system. And you'll get familiar with those as they come online. We have more goals to achieve throughout the course of the year. Well, we're about to, well, we've just checked off the opening of the Hillsborough Shelter. Actually, I, I was speaking with our provider this evening. I understand they will start receiving guests on December first, the, after Thanksgiving. So on track with that goal as well as all of the other goals on here, on this list. Especially our transitional housing projects are proceeding as planned. Improved, improved invoice work with our partners as well on track. And as I mentioned, that housing resolution fund, which is on track to open January first. So you'll be receiving outcomes in Q3 and Q4 on that project. A quick update on our financials. You will see on the left, our budget for this year in the, from SHS Funding. So the, the year five approved budget for those resources, specifically where we are at on our actuals and percentage, generally tracking where we want to be at Q, at the end of Q1. And as you can see, the homeless prevention is zero because that program has not yet opened, but it is on track as we planned. And that's why next year, that budget will probably be twice as much because this was just a partial year program, knowing that it wouldn't be ready to go with the beginning of our fiscal year. I do want to mention here on this slide that we are preparing for budget planning in year six, of course. And that will include an upcoming conversation with your board as Metro releases their forecast and we begin to prepare for investments of one-time funding that were carried over from previous year and will help us plan for years ahead. So more conversations on our budget to actuals and planning for years ahead. And then next is just what's coming next. In community engagement, thank you to the board for careful awareness and attention to our conversations with neighbors. We have two projects underway at this time. As you are, as you heard earlier this evening, we are working with neighbors on our Cornell Road Recovery Transitional Housing Site, which is set to open in approximately a year. But neighborhood engagement is well underway and going to get underway with even more enthusiasm in the, in January. We do have a planned event in February, pardon me, December, with neighbors to introduce the new provider helping hands. So more on that will be coming to your board and to the neighbors shortly. And we are waiting to identify and, and select that, that permanent shelter pod site. So as soon as that information is prepared, we will then be reaching out and beginning a community engagement process with that neighborhood as well. Not tomorrow night, Thursday night, we will be having a public hearing with our Housing Solutions, Homeless Solutions Advisory Council. And this public hearing is engaging broad community feedback on how we update our local implementation plan, the LIP. So we're excited to hear broadly from our community about where we should be focusing our resources and system refinement over the next five years through that planned work. We can't say it enough, the Hillsborough Shelter is about to open. So here it is again on this slide. And then, as I mentioned, budget planning ahead. And as I pass the baton here to our colleague, Kiomi with the City of Hillsborough, we can't speak highly enough of our housing, sorry, pardon me, our city liaison program, which is funded through SHS. It's an opportunity for our county to partner with our cities who are navigating the day-by-day impacts of homelessness in their local communities with their law enforcement, their libraries, their local businesses, and coordinating directly with our shelter providers, our outreach system, to make sure that we are coordinating care effectively in their community. Kiomi is one of our most esteemed and beloved city liaisons, working with the city of Hillsborough. She's helped us navigate this grand development of the shelter and its opening, but more importantly, how we bring that program into community, serve the community members experiencing homelessness here in Hillsborough and day-by-day, making sure that we're a good partner and neighbor with the residents in, in the Hillsborough community. So thank you for joining us, Kiomi. We're happy to share the limelight with you and have you provide some updates from the work from, on your front.
Thank you. Is this, I'm good, okay. So again, I'm going to talk about the shelter and I know you just saw it. I'm sorry, I won't go too much into the weeds, but.
Oh, please, gush. It's beautiful.
Thank you all for having me. For the record, my name is Kiomi Arbuckle, Community Services Program Coordinator. I do just want to take a moment to highlight what a milestone this is for our entire community. This represents a year of planning, partnership, and persistence on all of your parts. From initial concept to design and construction to community outreach and engagement, the county has been a invaluable partner. I personally, just speaking for myself, don't know what I would do if I didn't have the county because I'm an individual contributor and I feel like I have an extended team here. So I really appreciate what your team does. We are really excited because this is going to fill a critical gap for our community. It provides safe, dignified, year-round space for individuals who need stability as they pursue the next steps in their housing journey. We are also really looking forward to the ways the shelter will help deepen community understanding. This is one of my favorite parts of this process so far. When new resources like this open, we hear from residents who want to learn more about how the shelter system works. They want to know how people access beds and how multiple levels of government even work together to get this work done and to support individuals on the ground level. It's an opportunity to educate, invite community members in, and help people feel connected to the work that we're doing, not just as observers, but as partners in creating solutions. We are grateful to Project Homeless Connect for stepping in as the operator. They have deep experience working with the homeless community, strong relationships across the county's service network, and a commitment to trauma-informed service delivery. I also want to thank county staff again, not just the individuals that are sitting here right now, but also the finance team, program staff, even the facilities team. I feel like so many people have touched this project and there's no way to even list every single human, so thank you. We are especially grateful to the Board of County Commissioners for your leadership, investment, and willingness to work so much with us. They should probably see too much of us. And so, moving on to this, I do want to highlight the partnerships and how we support and work together. Our ongoing work with Washington County is extremely essential to how we support the residents here in Hillsborough, both those experiencing homelessness and those who reach out with livability concerns who are homed. I interact daily with individuals who need help navigating the system, whether that's shelter access, behavioral health support, or simply understanding what services are available. Because the city does not offer services, I rely heavily, we rely heavily on the county's coordinated system, whether that's outreach workers, shelter providers, behavioral health systems, yay for the cat, to make sure that when someone does reach out for help, we can help them find a clear path forward. A key part of the work in Hillsborough was our Hillsborough Police Department's Community Impact Team, which plays a major role in our livability response. This team is trained specifically in trauma-informed engagement, de-escalation, and understanding the service pathways available through Washington County. They work directly in the field. The team responds to community concerns, including checking on encampment sites. And for individuals who may be struggling in public spaces, the team often directs them to resources. In the case of public camping, they also educate them on camping rules, which is a lot of what they do, and also educating the community on camping rules and what that, that may look like in their neighborhood. This shared approach is what makes the system work. The Community Impact Team, identifying somebody in crisis, then maybe reaching out to me and then me being able to connect with the county to make sure that they have a path forward. We're also excited for the future Project, Project Homeless Connect Access Center. I know it's further away than the shelter is right here in front of us, but it's going to be, it's going to expand the opportunities to connect people with new resources that are coming online. Across the board, our shared goal is clear, to provide compassionate, coordinated, and consistent response for our houseless neighbors and for the broader community. We deeply appreciate the county's continued partnership and the collective problem-solving that makes this work possible. I did not talk about the LIP plan, but I will say that our ECH Dev team, it has been involved in providing feedback. So also appreciate you for never leaving us out. We always feel included and that's great. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here today and I will pass it back to Molly.
I think, Kiomi, I think you may have just elevated a nice way of thinking about it, compassionate, coordinated, and consistent. So thank you for that. And thank you for joining us and thank you to the board for your time and opportunity to share this work. Back to you, Chair Harrington.
Great. Let me turn it over to my colleagues first to see if they have any questions or colleague, questions or comments. Commissioner Snyder, since you're on Zoom, let me check in with you first.
Yeah, just to thank you to our team for continuing to keep us updated and really demonstrating the progress and value that this system of care and shelter is providing to our community overall. I don't have any specific questions this quarter. I know in the past I've had maybe some more challenging questions. I'm going to, I'm going to avoid that this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. Commissioner Theresa Fai.
Thank you, Chair. I, I just want to, again, thank you for, for this work. I think the, the point for me that really hits home is how our voters approve these dollars and how we are responsibly spending that money and demonstrating through the charts, through the pictures, through our grand openings, how, how our voters are affecting our community through, through the work that you're doing. So thank you so much for your public service heart and for the work that you're doing. Much appreciated.
Commissioner Fai.
Thank you, Chair. Not that this is a competition, but Kiomi, you stole the show tonight. Good job. I really appreciate it. And I think the team always bring a fourth person and it's been spectacular. And I think this speaks to, to your all leadership county staff to say that you really are changing lives here in Washington County. And I really appreciate you articulating the impact of the shelter, the Hillsborough Shelter. I was going to write and tell you the number of times you all said the Hillsborough Shelter, but I'll stop the competition right now and just tell you, great job, very impressive work. I, I can only imagine the amount of work you put in, but we see your reports. And yes, Molly, we all have them, at home and in the office. I'm taking this with me because I was like, in case I don't have the one at home. So thank you. I'm just in celebratory mode with you. This, this report has so many lives changed. The numbers really catch my, and you always pick great pictures, by the way, too. Impactful. They say a picture says a thousand words, it's better, or something. Anyways, good job. Job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, team. I always appreciate these quarterly updates because it gives our community members the opportunity to know that their dollars are making an effect right here in the Washington County community. Really exciting results to date, as you've reported. Exciting affordable housing next steps for the projects that you talked about, Jill. Thank you, Kiomi, for your work each and every day and in very great partnership with our staff. We live together in our communities and you're helping that be better for more and more people each and every day. On SHS, your progress comes through with each of these presentations. You know, I always love the maps and sorry, there's blurring on my screen, but voters, the, this system didn't used to exist. And it's because of the voter investment in the two different measures, the Affordable Housing Bond measure and the income tax measure for supportive housing services that are able to do this work, change lives for the better, improve the face of our community. No longer am I hearing people fearing going to downtowns in Washington County or even in downtown Portland. No longer are people feeling afraid of, about people having a place to rest their head if such individuals are challenged by mental health, behavioral health needs, or disabilities. It's because of the work you do each and every day. Once again, I wrote year four on my report. I do it every year. I'll keep doing it. Small, small effort, great report. But I think this is the first of your presentations where you didn't have the direct human story told here as well, which you do so well. It's not in tonight's presentation, but it's definitely in the annual reports. You're doing a great job on social media channels as well. And as always, I'll speak on behalf of the board. Please do share with each of the advisory committees our thanks for their careful and thoughtful, caring work to ensure that you and we have the benefit of their input. Onward ho we go. Thank you. Okay. Thank you to our team for those two different presentations tonight. And next we'll move on to public hearings. After that, we'll have our action items. So we have three public hearings tonight. The first is related to clean water services. So, but before we do so, before I open a public hearing on this topic related to the Natural Systems Enhancement and Stewardship Program, I would like to ask, aha, Mr. Shanley, our interim CEO, General Manager, and Lisa Huntington has come up to the table for a brief staff report. Please take it away.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and ask Lisa to present the findings tonight regarding public testimony for the board's consideration in adopting an exemption from the competitive bidding process to construct public improvements in environmentally sensitive areas. So Lisa, please fully introduce yourself and take it away.
Thank you. Is this working okay? Okay. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners, for having me. My name is Lisa Huntington. I am Director of our Natural Systems Enhancement and Stewardship Department. I am Director of our Natural Systems Enhancement and Stewardship Department, Clean Water Services. There we go. I hit the button too many times. Rookie mistake, sorry. Okay. We are here today to request adoption of a new purchasing rule that will allow us to use a request-for-proposal process instead of the formal bidding for projects that are completed in natural areas. These projects occur in places like streams and wetlands, might include infrastructure elements with our sanitary sewers. All of these projects require pretty strict environmental permits, and it's important that we use qualified contractors to do the work because there's a lot of risk associated with those projects. We've classified those as the benefit, kind of the opposite of the risk, is when we can have a qualified contractor, we can ensure the project is completed in time and within budget. There's a reduced risk of project failure. There's a reduced risk of damage to our natural resources. That compliance with our project permits is more assured. And the industry has seen project failures post-construction when they're not constructed properly. So, that's a real risk we want to avoid. We are proposing to use the RFP process, which is still very competitive. We would include cost as a consideration, but we would also be able to consider the specific experience of the contractor relative to similar projects, handling work in wet areas, stream diversion, wetland systems, things like that. Also, making sure that they have experience complying with the project-specific environmental permits. And we also like to consider the contractor's record relative to safety and inclusion. Back in 2022, the board approved an exception to the formal bidding process for the Baumgrove Dam project, and that was super successful. Project was completed on time, under budget, full compliance with the permits, and we have not seen any failures at that site post-project. So, that was a great experience, and we'd just like to be able to apply a similar process to these types of projects moving forward without having to come for approval on every single project.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I might have missed it somewhere, but approximately, do you have an approximate number of projects that you'll need to?
Good question. I'm gonna answer and look to my colleague, to my colleague is...
Or two.
Yeah, two colleagues. I brought the cavalry.
Thank you for being here tonight.
Yeah, so I know that we have two of these kind of projects planned for next year, and typically we'll have one to two annually come down the pike, and it's, we've got them in the process all the time with design and permitting, but that's about how many.
And I need you to introduce yourself for the record.
My name's Matt Brennan. I'm a Division Manager in the Natural Systems Department.
Great, thank you.
Christina Gangl for Cment Supervisor.
Great. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
No, I think the case that we used it on the project was a really good example of why this is a good rule to pass.
Other colleagues, do you have any questions on the staff report? Nope? Okay. Seeing none, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to address us with regard to this topic of exemption from competitive bidding?
I did not see anyone sign up in advance of meeting with any member in the auditorium, which should probably public comment on this public hearing for up to two minutes. As you've heard from staff, not seeing one raise their hands, are coming forward. Is there any member on Zoom that we should probably public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Director Harrington.
Okay. And with that, I will close tonight's public hearing. And as part of this item, it includes the findings that we are asked to adopt and to further take action to exempt the agency from competitive bidding requirements for this class of public improvement contracts for sensitive area construction projects, and to approve the use of this request for the proposal process, and to also approve the exemption from bid security requirements for this class of projects, all done by adopting the resolution and order approving a new purchasing rule for sensitive area construction and public improvement contracts. What are the wishes of the Board of Directors?
Move for adoption as per your description.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you, Directors. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you again for being here this evening. Next, we'll move on to a Washington County land use and transportation topic, and I would like to invite the appropriate staff up to the table. This will be for second reading and first public hearing on an ordinance. So, before we move forward with the staff presentation, could I ask for a motion to read, have the second reading of proposed ordinance number 911 by title only?
So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to one. Ms. Duke Dreesen.
Madam Chair, an ordinance number 911, an ordinance to amend Chapter 3.27 of the Washington County Code, Establishing a Commercial Property-Assessed Clean Energy or CPACE Program.
Thank you. Now, we'll turn it over to you, staff experts. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and members of the board. My name is Erin Wardell. I am the Assistant Director of the Department of Land Use and Transportation. And with me this evening to do our staff report is Adrienne Chalé, Economic Development Manager.
Thank you, Erin. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board of County Commissioners. We will provide a brief staff update on the commercial property assessed clean energy program. As you know, CPACE enables property owners to access upfront, long-term real estate financing for sustainability and resiliency improvements, including energy efficiency upgrades, renewable energy systems, water conservation measures, seismic retrofits, applying to both new development and existing structures. You can see an overview of your prior board action focusing in on September 9th, when the board rejected ordinance 906 that would have repealed the CPACE program and directed staff to file a new ordinance extending the CPACE program indefinitely with a required program assessment on an annual basis. October 21st was the first reading, and here we are today for the public hearing. Since the rejection of ordinance number 906, which would have repealed the CPACE program, we wanted to provide you with a brief update that we're actively engaged in conversations with two CPACE project capital providers and property owners. More to be revealed soon. And we are also participating actively, supporting in the convening of regional CPACE administrators, discussing more collaborative efforts to conduct efficient outreach to developers and increase our marketing reach. As filed, ordinance number 911 would extend the CPACE program. The annual assessment would include these items, but also build upon these to support further engagement and process improvements. And as you may recall, in the recent program assessment findings in June, to date, we have completed two projects, both of which were commercial. So far, no housing or multi-use. However, we did identify multiple ways that we could improve upon the program, and as I mentioned, that includes a more robust education and outreach program, reaching developers interested in sustainability, and also establishing with your board clear program criteria and objectives that encourage specific types of use. So, our requested action today is to conduct the public hearing and continue this program indefinitely.
Do you want to present this slide and then?
Sure, I'll do that. So, as next steps we just covered, we're going to be continuing to develop those program guidelines, specifically success metrics, and in partnership with the Land Use and Transportation Communications Leadership and regional partners, identify methods to increase our CPACE outcomes.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions before we hold the public hearing?
I'm just pleased that we have two projects in the works. That's great. Thank you for your work on this.
Okay. Seeing no questions, I would like to open a public hearing and ask Clerk Moss if we have anyone who wishes to testify on this matter.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Would anyone in the auditorium wish to probably comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, I don't see anyone raising their hand or coming forward. Is there any member online via Zoom that wish to provide public testimony for up to two minutes on what you've heard from staff tonight? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you. And I will note that over the months, we have received some letters of support for this program. And with that, I would like to close tonight's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 911 as presented.
Move to adopt ordinance number 911.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Moss, could you take the roll call, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Commissioner Fai?
Aye.
Vice Chair Theresa?
Yes.
Chair Harrington.
Yes. Thank you. It's unanimous, four to zero. Onward to our third and final public hearing for tonight. This is another ordinance for Washington County, ordinance number 908. Could we please have a motion to read this ordinance by title only? Would we please have a motion to read ordinance number 908 by title only?
I move to...
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero. Ms. Duke Dreesen.
Madam Chair, ordinance number 908, an ordinance amending the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area relating to the adoption of boundaries for the Raleigh Hills Town Center, Sunset Town Center, and Washington Square Regional Center.
Thank you. We'll turn it over to our subject matter experts from Land Use and Transportation Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington, members of the board. I'm Carol Johnson, Planning and Development Services Manager, and I'm joined this evening by Suzanne Savin, who will give this evening's presentation.
So, thank you, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. This presentation will be about the Metro 2040 Centers Boundary Adoption, and my, oops, my presentation is going to first go over the ordinance context and some background, and then display and talk about the proposed center boundaries and staff requested change to the filed ordinance, planning commission's recommendation, and then the staff's recommendation. So, as context, the state's Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities, or CFECC, rules, and Metro's Urban Growth Management Functional Plan provisions require the county to adopt a Raleigh Hills Town Center, Sunset Town Center boundary, and an updated Washington Square Regional Center boundary. And this ordinance proposes to make amendments to our Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area to comply with these requirements. So, Metro's 2040 growth concept is a regional land use and transportation vision. It was initially adopted by the Metro Council in 1995, and it designated centers throughout the region. It designated town centers intended to provide services to thousands of people within a two-to-three-mile radius, and it also designated a smaller number of regional centers intended to service hundreds of thousands of people and provide hubs of commerce. And this slide shows a portion of the Metro 2040 growth concept map, sort of zoomed in on the urban unincorporated county, and showing the town centers in the county and also in the surrounding area of Hillsborough and Beaverton. So, in the late 90s and early 2000s, the county subsequently adopted boundaries for three of the four town centers that were in the urban unincorporated area. So, we adopted specific boundaries for the Cedar Mill Town Center, the Aloa Town Center, and the Bethany Town Center. There was a fourth town center within the urban unincorporated area at that time, Raleigh Hills, Raleigh Hills, but to date, the county has not adopted a specific boundary for that town center. So, kind of flash forwarding, in 2020, Governor Brown issued Executive Order 20-04 directing state agencies to take action to reduce and regulate greenhouse gas emissions to help address climate change. And in 2022, the Land Conservation and Development Commission adopted CFECC rules to implement that executive order, and those rules were adopted as rules into the Oregon Administrative Rules. And these CFECC rules require metro jurisdictions, including the county, to adopt boundaries for all of the centers identified on Metro's 2040 growth concept map by the end of this So, this ordinance will adopt the Raleigh Hills Town Center boundary, Sunset Town Center boundary, and an updated Washington Square Regional Center boundary. One of the things I wanted to note, to pause and note here, too, is that when the CFECC rules were adopted, the county staff was aware that we would have to adopt a Raleigh Hills Town Center boundary. Somewhat later, in conversations with City of Beaverton and Metro staff, we realized we would also need to adopt a Sunset Town Center boundary and an update to the Washington Square Regional Center boundary because both of those areas include some urban unincorporated properties. So, this ordinance, although it's going to be adopting boundaries for the three areas that are listed, what it will not do is it will not change any existing county or city land use designations, either inside or outside of those boundaries, and it will not change any existing county or city development regulations, or authorize any new development, or increase vehicle trips or traffic, or place any burdens on existing sanitary sewer, stormwater, or roads. So, I'm going to provide a little bit of context about the Raleigh Hills proposed boundary before then showing that boundary. In the late 1990s, the, let me back up just a little bit more, the Metro 2040 growth concept map, which shows the general area for the Raleigh Hills Town Center boundary that's pictured on this slide, it showed the majority of that boundary being in Washington County, but also showed it extending eastward into Multnomah County and the city of Portland. So, in the late 90s, the county began a town center, a town center planning process for Raleigh Hills, and as part of that process, the county coordinated with the cities of Beaverton and Portland. And as part of the coordination with Portland, county staff asked Portland staff whether Portland wanted the Raleigh Hills Town Center boundaries to extend into the city of Portland, and Portland replied, no, that they did not. So, the county then filed an ordinance in 1999 for Raleigh Hills Town Center Plan and Boundary. It was ordinance number 535, and it was engrossed in 2000, but it was ultimately rejected. So, last year, at a board work session in November 2024, staff was discussing the requirement for adopting a Raleigh Hills Town Center boundary to comply with the CFECC rules, and we received direction to base that proposed boundary on the ordinance 535 boundary from 1999 to the extent practicable. that proposed boundary on the Ordinance 535 Boundary from 1999 to the extent practicable. So we did use that as our, we did use that boundary as our starting point. And we then coordinated again with the cities of Portland and Beaverton. Portland confirmed again that they were not interested in having the boundary extend into the city of Portland. They also commented that they wanted two properties in the northeast corner of the boundary to be removed, because those properties were within the Portland urban service, or urban planning area, and so those properties were removed from the boundary. In conversations with the city of Beaverton, in the intervening years from 1999 to the present, some of the properties within the boundary have been annexed to Beaverton, and those properties are shown on this map on the, sort of the west side of the boundary with the blue horizontal lines on the white background. Those are City of Beaverton properties. City of Beaverton staff indicated that they were acceptable with having these remain in the boundary, and they will also be adopting this same boundary into their comprehensive plan. So for the Sunset Town Center, this town center contains probably majority properties that are within City of Beaverton, and again, those are shown with a horizontal blue line against a white background, but also many properties that are within the unincorporated county, and those are shown with various solid colors. And so Beaverton and the county jointly agreed on this town center boundary, and the county properties within this boundary generally have land use designations that allow higher densities or intensities of development. So many of these properties have transit-oriented land use designations, the various colors that you see on the south side of Highway 26 with red and salmon and green are all different transit-oriented districts. There are also some, several properties with institutional designations that are within the boundary, and that's the blue colors, and those include Providence St. Vincent Hospital, and Catlin Gable School, and the West Twalton View Elementary School. So for Washington Square Regional Center, provide a little context about that, too. So in the early 2000s, Beaverton, Tigard, and the county each adopted boundaries for this regional center, and all of those boundaries included properties within all three jurisdictions. Then in 2021, Tigard led a planning process to update this regional center boundary, and the county participated in that planning process. And as part of that process, Tigard proposed updates that included updating portions of the boundary within the county's urban unincorporated area, specifically along Southwest Hall Boulevard, south of its intersection with Olson Road. And the county supported the changes that Tigard had proposed. And subsequently, in 2024, Tigard did update the boundary and adopted an updated boundary. The county did not adopt an updated boundary at that time, and so now that the CFECC rules are in effect, we need to do that now. So staff is recommending changes to the filed ordinance, and specifically, a change to the regional center boundary map. So the proposed boundary map in the filed ordinance is shown on the left hand of the slide, and it identifies the urban unincorporated properties within the boundary as a solid color. And then for context, it also identifies the city properties within the regional center boundary with a diagonal hatch pattern. And shortly after the ordinance was filed, Metro staff identified some issues regarding the map's depiction of the regional center extents within the cities. And in response to those comments, staff is now recommending that this map be amended, as shown on the right side of the slide, to remove the regional center extents within the cities, and also remove the corresponding map legend item. And these amendments will correct the inaccuracies that Metro staff had identified, and also make this map consistent with the other 2040 Design Type Maps in our Comprehensive Framework Plan, which all only show the portions of these design types that are within urban unincorporated areas. And so the ordinance as a whole makes the following changes to our Comprehensive Framework Plan. It amends the text of CFP Policy 15 to remove Implementing Strategy J regarding implementation of town centers, since that language is no longer relevant. And it also amends the following maps in CFP Policy 40, updates the Washington Square Regional Center Boundary on the regional center boundary map, and adds boundaries for the Raleigh Hills Town Center and Sunset Town Center on the town center boundaries map. And for the remaining 2040 Design Type Maps, it updates the current city boundaries on those maps. So staff's recommending engrossment of the ordinance to amend the regional center boundary map in Exhibit 2 to remove the depiction of the Washington Square Regional Center's extents within the two cities and the corresponding map legend item. And those changes are shown in the staff report in Attachment A. The planning commission considered this ordinance on October 1st and unanimously recommended that the board adopt the ordinance with engrossment as recommended by staff. So staff's recommending that the board conduct a hearing and order engrossment of Ordinance 908 as described in the staff report and shown in Attachment A, and then continue the hearing for the engrossed ordinance to December 9th of 2025 and December 6th, or, excuse me, January 6th of 2026, and direct staff to prepare and mail notice of the amendments consistent with the requirements of the charter. And that concludes staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Savin. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the staff report? Go ahead, Commissioner Fai.
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the proposed changes to filed ordinance slide, that slide. Probably two slides. I think I missed your explanation. I think I was trying to zoom in on the maps here. Could you just quickly, briefly explain?
Sure, sure. So the changes would basically remove, right now, the map on the left is the version that's in the filed ordinance. What we're, what the county is required to show is we're required to show the areas of the unincorporated county that would be in these boundaries, and we have shown those in that fuchsia color. We weren't required, we were not required to show the extents of this boundary within the cities. We did that in the filed ordinance to provide some context about why the two colored areas are separated from each other. But as I indicated, Metro had given us feedback shortly after the ordinance was filed that the extents of the boundary within cities was not wholly accurate. And so what they pointed out was that when the cities of Tigard and Beaverton had each adopted their own regional center boundary, their boundaries were pretty much the same, except they were not the same in terms of where the boundary was within the city of Beaverton. So this, on this, on the map to the left, this is showing, this is showing the overall boundary of what Tigard had adopted, and it's kind of hard for me to sort of describe this, but in the top part of the map, that you see the areas that are with cities, it's almost like the top part of a pair of lungs. It's kind of like these two pointed areas. And those two areas are within the city of Beaverton, even though this is, this was the outline of a map that was adopted by Tigard. Beaverton's version of this map has, instead of those two pointed areas, they have it almost going straight across at the top within their city. And so what Metro had said to staff is that, county, if you're going to show the cities extents on your map, you need to make sure you show the extents within Beaverton to be the same as what Beaverton had adopted, and the extents within Tigard to be the same as what Tigard had adopted. And so staff thought it was cleaner for us to simply take all of the city extents off the map, because we weren't required to put them on the map in the first place. So hopefully that explains.
Thank you.
Okay.
Are there any other Commissioner questions? Okay, if we could take the presentation down then, thank you very much. And at this juncture, I would like to open the public hearing and ask Clerk Moss if we have anyone who wishes to testify on this item.
Did not see anyone sign up in advance of the meeting. Is there anyone in the auditorium that wish to provide a comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, give you up to two minutes. Raise your hand, come forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Oh, you caught me in a yawn. Thank you very much. And with that, I would like to close tonight's public hearing and ask for a motion to order the engrossment of Ordinance Number 908 as described in the staff report and shown in Attachment A to the ordinance, and to continue the hearing for the engrossed ordinance to December 9th, 2025, and July 6th of 2026. Thank you. January, I do it every time, don't I? It's something about those J months. January 6th, 2026, and direct staff to prepare and mail notice of the amendments consistent with the requirements of Title 10 of the county charter.
So moved, Chair.
We, is that a second, Commissioner Snyder? Your hand is raised.
It was intended to be a request to speak briefly, but we can take the second and then hopefully go to that. And I'll second it, sorry. I'll second it as well.
Yes, and go ahead, Commissioner Snyder.
I just wanted to commend the staff report. This is what could have been a very complicated, I think, topic for the public and for the commission to understand, and it was the most concise, robustly presented in a, in a very short time period that was very easy to digest, and I just wanted to point that out, thank our staff team for that.
Thank you. Good work, Ms. Savin. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call, please, Clerk Moss?
We certainly can. Commissioner Fai?
Aye.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Vice Chair Trese?
Yes.
Chair Harrington.
Yes. Thank you. That action passes unanimously, four to zero. Next, we'll move forward with our action items. We have three different items for Clean Water Services. The first is to approve the Second Amendment to an Intergovernmental Agreement for Joint Billing Services between Clean Water Services and the Tuauton Valley Water District. Do we have a staff presentation on this item?
I'll say a few things. It's a fairly straightforward amendment. What our proposal is, is to extend the current agreement through this IGA, through the amendment to the IGA, up until June 30th, 2030, unless either party gives written notice of intent not to renew at least 12 months prior to the expiration date. So that last item, I feel, is important to recognize. As we're looking at alternative billing processes, we do have the flexibility, pending the outcome of that study, to make changes. And, but for now, we're basically status quo with the agreement that we have in place.
Great. Thank you very much. Commissioners, directors, rather, do you have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the Second Amendment to this Intergovernmental Agreement, IGA, for Joint Billing Services between Clean Water Services and Tuauton Valley Water District.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Next, we have a proposal to approve re-domesticating Clean Water Services Insurance Company, also known as QUIC, a captive insurance entity from the state of Hawaii to the state of Arizona. Welcome. Who would like to start first, Rick or Ms. Lubdal?
I can take this. I think it's fairly straightforward. It's exactly as you said, for purposes of the public record. Caroline Lubdal, General Counsel, Chief Compliance Officer, here to ask that the board approve re-domestication of Clean Water Insurance Company, a captive insurance company entity from Hawaii to Arizona. As you know, we did have a third-party consultant. That third-party consultant determined that Arizona is the most currently favorable domicile. We also had some additional legal and administrative costs associated with this, so the decision and the recommendation is to approve this re-domestication. This resolution and order approves that decision and also directs and authorizes Clean Water Services staff, CEO, to effectuate the decision.
Thank you. And I will also note, for the public's benefit, that the work session topic sheet does remind us all that the board had the opportunity of this analysis at a public work session on Friday, October 10th, 2025, and all those materials are publicly available. So at this juncture, directors, do you have any questions or comments before I ask for a motion? Nope. Then I would ask for a motion to approve the re-domestication of Clean Water Insurance's Company, QUIC, a captive insurance entity from Hawaii to Arizona.
Move to accept.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, four to zero. Next, we'll move to our third and final action for this evening, and this is to adopt a resolution and order to amend and restate the Clean Water Institute, or CWI, Articles of Incorporation. Ms. Lubdal?
Thank you. It's exactly as you stated. The purpose of this and the trick, I have two points up preliminary to start with on this. The first is that this resolution and order is calling on your capacity, both as a Washington County Board of Commissioner and a Clean Water Services Director. Even though we have a single RNO, I do, you will need to, because of the origination of this, which was an error to put the Washington County Board on it, out of, as an abundance of caution, I'm going to ask that you do it in both capacities. And I've let your clerk know for the two different numbers, and I haven't had a chance to mention that to Courtney, but I think you might have known that. We were going to do this, I hope. Okay. I'm sorry if I didn't, I haven't been handling it directly with the county council. Brad Anderson has been. So it is two, two hats, and the purpose of it is to allow the Clean Water Institute to let its current assets go beyond just to another nonprofit, which is how the current articles read. So in order, if there is an intention to, you know, to dissolve this entity and to transfer those assets into Clean Water Services, which I think there is, we will need to adjust those Articles of Incorporation to allow that. The second step, then, would be to make the decision to have the dissolutions. Once we amend the bylaws herein today, we would then notify the Department of Justice and the state of this, and we would file that. The state would then have 30 days to object or to not object, and when they, if there is no objection, then we will dispense the assets, as you will later decide, and then we will report back to the Department of Justice how those assets got distributed. So the question today is just for the Washington County Commissioner and the Clean Water Services Director to amend those articles, and we will come back to you on another step for dissolutionment and then follow the state process.
Terrific. Is that clear to everyone?
Yes.
Great.
Can I just ask if we're doing it in one motion or in two?
You are doing it in two. This one is just to amend the articles, and then we file that with the state.
No, actually, my question is tonight for this step.
Right.
Two different motions, one as the Board of Commissioners and one as Clean Water Services Board of Directors.
I think so, even though it's the same resolution and order. It's the same. Yes, I think you should.
Yes. So I will call it out as two separate motions, seconds, and votes, okay? Are there any other questions or comments before I start? I would like to ask for a motion of the Washington County Board of Commissioners for a motion to adopt the resolution and order to amend and restate the Clean Water Institute, CWI, Articles of Incorporation. Do we have such a motion?
So moved, as Commissioner of Washington County.
Second, that motion.
All those in favor of Washington County Board of Commissioners, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The motion carries unanimously four to zero. And now, as the Clean Water Services Board of Directors, I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution in order to amend and restate Clean Water Institute, CWI, Articles of Incorporation.
So moved as member of the Board of Directors of Clean Water Services.
Second that motion.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, directors. Any opposed? That too passes unanimously four to zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
For ensuring we dot all of our i's and cross our t's appropriately. Next, we'll move on to our second public comment period of this evening. Clerk Moss, who do we wish to address us for up to five minutes, an individual?
First, the first two we have is Robin Price and Mary Kalakipopoulos. I tried Mary.
Robin Price and Mary Halkiopoulos. Welcome.
I think Chair Harrington is the only one that can say Mary's last name.
No, no, I'm not. Because Mary knows how to say it, so they're right there.
I mean, the one, from the one Washington County family.
No, it's just that she has been very patient in training me.
Yeah, and I don't see Robin, so Jill, would you like to join?
Welcome, Ms. Latre. Whenever you're ready, Mary.
Okay, oh, sorry. Good evening, Chair Harrington and commissioners. My name is Mary Halkiopoulos, a resident of Washington County. On November 10th, 2025, the United States Supreme Court agreed to take up a case to decide whether federal law requires ballots to not only be cast by voters but also received by election officials by election day. This refers to a case decided by the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Fifth Circuit on October 25th, 2024. That case invalidated a Mississippi election law that allowed ballots postmarked by election day to be accepted and counted if they are received within five days thereafter. The unanimous appeals court ruled that the Mississippi law was invalid because it violated the elector's clause of the U.S. Constitution. In their decision, they wrote, quote, "Federal law requires voters to take timely steps to vote by election day, and federal law does not permit the state of Mississippi to extend the period for voting by one day, five days, or 100 days. The state's contrary law is preempted," end quote. SCOTUS will likely hear oral arguments sometime next year, with a decision to follow by late June or early July. Mississippi, 30 other states, and the District of Columbia have similar laws regarding receiving ballots after election day, including, of course, Oregon. The Oregon Secretary of State website states, OAR, Oregon Administrative Rule 165-007-0045, requires ballots to have a postal indicator showing that the ballot was mailed on or before election day. Postal indicators or postmarks are applied to mail when they are processed at the post office. Oregon law, Oregon Revised Statute 254.470, Section 6 states, "The ballot must have a postal indicator showing that the ballot was mailed not later than the date of the election and be received at the office of the county clerk not later than seven calendar days after the date of the election." However, Section 8 of this law is rarely mentioned. It states, "If the elector returns the ballot by mail and a postal indicator is not present or legible, the ballot shall be considered to be mailed on the date of the election and may be counted if the ballot is received no later than seven calendar days after the election." So despite the disclaimer on the Secretary of State website, the truth is, Oregon ballots may be received and counted for up to seven calendar days after election day, with or without a postmark. Since this seven-day post-election day extension was put into effect in January 2022, Washington County has been receiving and counting thousands and thousands of ballots arriving after election day. Last week, Judicial Watch President Tom Fitton posted on X, quote, "Huge. Supreme Court takes up our successful case and is set to decide whether the counting of ballots received after election day is unlawful." And in a previous May 2025 video on the case, he said, quote, "We have a civil rights lawsuit for Mississippi voters who object to that state's counting ballots for up to five days that arrive, absentee ballots after an election. Federal law allows for an election day, not an election week. We also have a lawsuit in Illinois where they count ballots that arrive for up to 14 days after an election, even without a valid postmark. I tell you, counting ballots after election day is a great way to invite fraud. It undermines confidence in the elections, plus it's downright illegal. We request again that Washington County exercise its home rule authority and take back local control of our elections, including not accepting ballots received after election day. We want election day, proof of citizenship and residency, voter ID, paper ballots, hand counted, in precincts with limited absentee ballots allowed." Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Latre.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and commissioners. My name is Jill Latre, and I've lived in Washington County for over 30 years. I'm following up on my testimony from November 4th, Election Day. I was an observer at the election office on the night of the election and also on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week. There's not enough time tonight for me to share all of my experiences, so I will highlight a few. First, I will inform you that the observers viewed the election from the observation room again, on the screen with poor resolution, no sound, and the rotating limited views of some of the areas where ballots are processed. Citizens have been requesting for four years to observe the election process in person in each area that ballots are being processed. I again will read ORS 254.482, which states, "The county clerk, if requested, shall permit authorized persons to be at the office of the county clerk to watch the receiving and counting of votes. The Vote-by-Mail Procedure Manual states, 'Members of the public may observe all ballot processes except the confidential election processes, such as challenged ballot processes.' Commissioner Terry asked Director Joe Nelson in person on election night when citizens would be allowed to observe in person all the processes as the citizens did at the Murray Road Election Office. Commissioner Terry did not receive a clear answer. The process is not acceptable. It's very frustrating, and it violates the statute and the procedure's manual. As I reported during my testimony on election day, on page 41 of the Vote-by-Mail Procedure Manual, it states, 'Once ballot counting begins, tally all ballots before ending the election day count.' Having observed the closing of the election office during multiple elections on election night, I know that this has not been the practice of Washington County. I spoke with Dan Forrester shortly after I arrived on election night. He informed me the boards were all caught up, and they would take a break until after the drop boxes were closed and the ballots delivered later that evening. I asked if he planned to finish counting all the ballots that evening. Dan informed me that he had listened to my testimony that day, and he said, he didn't know if they would finish counting, but they planned to close between midnight and 12:30 a.m. and resume in the morning. He implied that it was important to finish counting the ballots on election night because the election office would continue receiving ballots in the mail for the next week. I explained, without having a complete tally and posted results that evening, it was difficult to know how many ballots were being received each day, especially when the results weren't posted again until Friday. His reply was, 'That was my perception.' The Washington County Election Office closed after midnight on election day, and the counting of the ballots was not complete. It was reported to the observers that about 35,000 ballots were received on election day. On the website, the Washington County Election Office posts under the current election a voter turnout. This turnout reports the number of ballots received and is updated over the course of the election, but not always each day. You are not able to see the previous post once the numbers are updated. I have screenshots of the voter turnout for most of the days beginning on October 17th. The numbers change, both up and down, over the course of an election. What was reported on a given day will not always be the same days later. I've given you just two copies of screenshots I have from those turnouts, the 11-4 election day count and the 11-7. On the screenshots that end with the date 11-4, you can see the ballots changed from 35,825, and then 37,177, and then 38,970, all received on election day. On the number for November 5th, the numbers are changing from 5,210 down to 3,319. And the numbers for November 6th are 4,230 down to 4,209. These numbers changing, excuse me, these numbers changes, especially when they drop, are very confusing and make it very hard to verify what is happening in the election office with the ballots coming in. Just as was read earlier, it undermines the public's confidence. I was hoping to share more about these numbers tonight, but I will do that in the future. Thank you again.
Okay. Thank you, but we do have your written letter as well, written testimony. Thank you. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
The last two we have is Janet Bailey and Jim Long. Mr. Long's still here? I don't see him. So we'll end it with Ms. Bailey.
Good evening.
I'm Janet Bailey. I've been a resident of Washington County for 25 years. We, the people, are working diligently to strengthen our Oregon election system. Currently, there's blatant fraud in Oregon's election system. We are defending faith, freedom, and truth, all three of which some in this room appear to be working against. Once again, you've been shown and heard a long list of facts and statistics proving that, without a doubt, our current fraudulent voting system is, is up and running. It's proven the only fair and honest voting system is in-person voting, presenting picture ID, showing citizenship, one-day voting, hand counting, and no voting machines. For voting machines can be hacked and algorithms can be set to favor certain candidates. Now, I'd like to speak briefly on transitional housing facilities that I think are being scheduled to be located at Cornell Road and in Cornelius. It is my understanding Washington County purchased the property without transparency and without adequate community input. The facility is planned to house individuals, some with a history of violent crimes and sex offenders. This puts an at-risk safety bearing for, and well-being for the entire community. It's, it seems someone previously gave offensive political comments and even lectured the community. We do not have a miss, a message problem. We are coming against inaccurate information. The transitional housing laws, rules, and regulations against sex offenders near schools, parks, children does apply to temporary housing. We citizens actually realize what we vote on and how this county is defying federal laws and using taxpayer money without our say. Washington County will soon run out of money using other people's money. Criminals should not be voting. So if illegal immigrants are hard-working, taxpaying people, how do they pay taxes without a social security number? What part of criminal is so hard to understand? Illegal immigrants are breaking the law to get into our country. That's illegal. They must be using stolen social security numbers. That's illegal. And also, if they've been here and have been productive for years, they should have enough money to gain citizenship. My heart goes out to illegal aliens, but I was taught as a child, and maybe you were too, that there are consequences for bad behavior. Being a criminal is bad behavior and should not be rewarded. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else?
We have one via Zoom, the Treekeepers of Washington County. Can you please identify your name here and then go ahead for up to five minutes?
Yes, my name is Fran Warren, for the record, and I happen to be president of Treekeepers of Washington County. I just want to explain to the board my long absence in being here, visiting the board. I appreciate the work that all of you do, but I've been doing a lot of grounds work and working on things like cooling the climate of our county with trees and, trees and schoolyards, et cetera. My public comment here is really about the, as a private citizen, so you can limit me, but I really, really did enjoy the homeless, the sheltering program, that presentation. Excellent. You know, I'm a person of math as well and numbers, and was very, very well done. My two comments are, number one, I really do like the new addition that Multnomah County has added, which is accounting for those individuals who are houseless and not showing up in the system. Having been there myself as a youngster, I understand my mother did not want to be counted, and she would do everything to avoid it. And so not everyone is seeking shelter. So we need to be able to distinguish between those who are seeking self-shelter and those who avoid the system and live off the grid. My last point on this was, you know, me and my trees and shelters for wildlife. On the lower 209th, I'm hoping that we will allow for public funding of irrigation and maintenance of whatever trees go in that area, the wetlands. I have championed this with Affordable Housing Act and have not been listened to, but if we're going to put in public housing, we need to make sure that anything that we put in there will have irrigation and maintenance, because those trees will definitely cool the housing without air conditioner's expense. And we need to make sure that people don't go without a meal because they need to turn on the air conditioner, et cetera. So that's my comment, and I'm always available, as you all know, and I really enjoy what's coming here to speak with you. I've just been busy with my nose to the grindstone.
Thank you, Ms. Warren, for your comments tonight and for your efforts to continue throughout our greater Washington County community.
So there was one other hand, but it was Deanna Johnson who already spoke at the beginning of the meeting, so that concludes for tonight.
Yep. Thank you. And with that, I will make some board announcements. We will not be having any board meetings next Tuesday, November 25th. And then we're into the month of December. On Tuesday, December 2nd, we'll start with a work session at 9:00 a.m., pause that, then convene as the Housing Authority Board of Directors at 10:00 a.m., and then immediately follow that, we'll hold the board business meeting, which we're thinking will be at approximately 10:30 a.m., and then later, likely around 1:00 o'clock after the lunch break, we'll reconvene the work session. On Thursday, December 4th, we'll have a board roundtable meeting that starts at 9:00 a.m. On Tuesday, November 9th, we're going to have our afternoon work session starting at 2:00, followed by our board meeting that evening, starting at 6:30 p.m. On Tuesday, December 16th, that will be our last meeting day for the calendar year. We'll start our work session at 9:00, pause that, reconvene later, and have the board meeting start. meeting, starting at, the board business meeting at 10:00 a.m. We'll not be having any board meetings the week of Tuesday, December 23rd, or the week that includes Tuesday, December 30th, due to holiday times. And so then, in the December meetings, I'll announce the January meeting set. Are there any other board announcements for this evening's meeting? Seeing none, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously four to zero, and thank you again, Commissioner Snyder, for joining us tonight. Enjoy the conference.
You bet. Thank you.